You gotta let Tim bring him a meeting to order, maybe.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that? So this is the August 20th, 2024, meeting of the West Newbury Planning Board. I am the Vice Chair, Tim Cronin. I am chairing tonight's meeting because our Chair is out having fun in Switzerland. I'm jealous. So that would be Ray Cook.
Oh, thank God.
You're one out. It's not even my fault. Um. So what I would like to do, maybe it's just to see, is there anyone on that is speaking on behalf of the Stewart Street Approval Not Required?
Is it? Yes, yes. I'm not sure if I'm connected.
We hear you.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm with John Bachelor here. Mr. Bachelor did not realize that your meetings were Zoom only. So John Bachelor is here with me. So we're listening. I'm sorry, I'm Blake Steele, just a neighbor of his.
Oh, hi Blake.
Hi, how you doing? Hi. But John is here definitely to speak if there's any questions about, you know, his property.
Okay. Well, usually what we do is when we introduce, you know, an A and R, we do have somebody speak on behalf of the plan that's been submitted. So would that be John? Would he be doing that? Just to describe?
Yeah, John's here. I'm a little bit more, this Blake again, I'm a little bit more familiar with the process that John has gone through. I've helped John with his engineer and the people who have proposed his lot.
Yeah, Tim, Tim.
So Donna Blake.
Blake, Blake, excuse me. Blake, please. Tim. Do we have an issue with the application? It was not signed, at least a copy I have, by the town clerk. It was stamped.
Are you saying it's Tim or Blake? I couldn't understand that.
That's Tim.
I think that was directed at me. Yeah, they, what I have, Brian, is something that's stamped, received by the Westonbury Clerk, 24 August, August 5th, 2024, 3:49 PM, but it is not signed as received. Is that what you're pointing out, Brian?
Yes. Is that an issue?
I'm not sure what the practice is for the clerk's office as far as them just stamping it, or do they also sign it?
I don't know. Anybody?
I don't know.
Okay, so I guess the question is.
If we had it in by the, I think the 5th, that it'd be on this meeting.
Yep, correct. That's, yeah, we're not talking about that, Blake. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if the other board members are fine with it, I just, we usually see it. I think we see it signed, but it is, it is date stamped.
It is date stamped, yeah. It is date stamped, but it is not signed. I'm not sure why that is.
Okay. All right. So yeah, so yeah, Tim, so go ahead. I just had to point that out.
Sure. Yeah. So if Mr. Bachelor could just describe the requests that this be forced this evening for the approval, not required plan?
I'm just requesting to be able to sell an acre of land. I don't know what else to say at this point.
Okay. So. I, you know, I'll just be first, if you don't mind, on my own behalf. I did review the plan and what I did notice was that there isn't a zoning dimension table for the bylaw on the plan. You know, I personally find that very helpful. That's how, you know, you can just look at the plan and immediately determine kind of whether or not the dimensions that are shown on the plan are adequate for purposes of the dimensions in the zoning bylaw. So I would ask that there be a table added to the plan that show the required dimensions for this zone.
Okay, so you, so you want the engineer, the design engineer to put that, what zone it's in and what the acreage is?
What?
Or frontage and, and/or whatever?
Yeah, so exactly. And do you want to take a shot at it?
Yes, it does say in the title block, Blake, I know it says it's in zoning District B.
Right.
But, but a little table that Tim is referring to would come out of the zoning bylaw and it would show that in Zone B, Residence B, you need X frontage and X area.
Wouldn't that be kind of redundant? I'm sorry to butt in. I mean, I'm a builder at trade. Wouldn't that be kind of redundant because you people know what your values, call it values, are in Zone B?
No, I don't think it's redundant. No.
It, Blake, we require this.
You require, okay, then that will be put on. So we will, we will have that put on. Like I said, I mean, that's why they didn't put it. I'm sure that's why, because my engineer I use all the time. But okay, go ahead, next.
That's what I had.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any comments beyond that either. Blake, I think one of the places where this is really useful is in the future. You know, these things get recorded and down the road, who knows what zones there will be and what the requirements will be. So since it's going to be a recorded document, I think that's the reason that we asked that that be put on there.
Okay, we can have Alec do that tomorrow.
Great.
That would go on, assuming we go ahead and vote on this, that would be, end up he'd provide a new MyLAR. And with that lock on it, correct?
Yeah, I think it would need to be a different MyLAR. Right, Tim?
Yes. Is that, yeah, I think that was directed to Blake or John.
Yep, yep. No, no, it could be directed to me. All right. So it needs to be on the MyLAR, what you want it on.
Correct.
Okay, we can, I can call up Alec tomorrow morning or actually call him this evening, make sure that's, and do we need to, so we need to bring you the MyLAR?
Yes.
To the town, to the town. Okay.
Yeah.
We will get that done within, before the end of the week, that will be done.
How many copies? And do you recall how many copies? I'm sorry.
Paper copies?
Yeah. Is it five?
My recollection is that it's two or three that we usually sign.
It's supposed to be three generally and one copy of the MyLAR, which unfortunately is very expensive, but we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So if it says three, it should have that in the, in the regs. If it's three, it's three. Yeah.
Yep, I believe it's three. Yeah.
I just, I, being the newbie on the planning board, one of you made reference earlier that this had been in Chapter 61A.
Correct.
And has this officially been withdrawn from 61A already? Is that process complete?
No. Well, brought my understanding, and once again, Blake, and I apologize, we will withdraw it and obviously have to do the whole tax thing after it's accepted. So, I mean, we wouldn't remove it from that until it is an accepted lot. If I'm correct, that's the way we're supposed to do it.
Yes, in fact, Tim, you may have the letter right there in front of you, but the town received notification, and I think that it probably went to the landowner too, that there's a certain process that has to be followed. So you'll follow whatever the guidance was in that letter when you go to draw it from 61A, but that will be a separate process from this.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We realize we have to do that.
Okay, excellent.
It was just a matter of formality. We wouldn't drop it from that until it was, you know, approved by the planning board.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I had no other comments on the, the lot, it's, correct.
Right. Any other discussion then, I guess?
No.
Okay. And, may I ask that? You preside, preside with the motion?
Yes, I move that the planning board enforce this application as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Tim Cronin? Aye.
Anne Bardine, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
All right, we will have those MyLARs in there this week. I will get them in there this week. And three, minimum three copies where we look at the bylaw and we'll get you a minimum of three copies of, you know, the approved plan, the plan.
Yeah, a minimum would be good. I think it's three, but yeah.
Okay, we can get to five. I mean, the, the regular plans don't cost us nothing. So we're okay with that. All right, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Okay, you're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Now, can anyone determine if we are recording?
I heard it as we.
I gotta shut this off.
Yeah, you got that notice? Okay, I thought I did.
Does say it's on, yes.
It's on?
Yes. Perfect.
I think Blake and Jeff.
I'm trying to shut it off, sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Yeah.
I apologize. I really am trying to shut it off. I can't figure.
We go through that.
There we go. I think you succeeded.
Okay. I'm glad it's not just me. All right. What I would suggest we do at this point, now that we have actually a few minutes before our first interested associate member conversation is, should we go through the minutes? Do we have enough time to do that? We have seven minutes, or we could just take a pause? Or we could take the interviews out of order, and I see Nate is here. Welcome, Nate.
No, I, I think we should stick with the time, timeline.
Stick with the time? Okay, let's do that.
We do a set of minutes and.
They were pretty, pretty basic ones, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, all right. Sorry, Nate, we're gonna put you, put you on hold for a few minutes. You can see how real business is conducted here. The first set of minutes we have is the June 18th, 2024 minutes. Let me see if I can pull them up.
That'd be good.
Is everybody seeing them?
Yeah, but I'm trying to find them.
Not yet.
Still seeing KP law.
Interesting. I have them on my screen.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can pull them up then, Anne, because they weren't in the packet.
They weren't in the packet, yeah.
No.
Oh, right, right, right.
Oh, they weren't. Oh.
No, they were separate. Yeah.
Are you looking at, so you're drawing from the packet? Well, then you won't have them.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm not a.
Not a Zoom guy.
I, I missed the, the class with Sue.
Well, I think we need to have them, do we need to have them in front of us? Because you folks don't have them handy, right?
I've read them.
I've read them. I didn't have any comments, but I don't know if anybody else did.
I had no comments.
I just don't know if I attended that meeting. I know I missed one.
Uh, Deb Hamilton was not in attendance.
Okay.
In that case.
Your excuse.
Your excuse, yes, you're off the hook, Deb. Okay. All right. Well, if everyone has reviewed them, then what I would suggest is that we just go ahead and vote to approve them. So I would move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Tim Cronin? Aye.
Anne Bardine, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Just make a note.
I just, I, I don't abstain. I just don't participate, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. No, we'll show that you abstained, so it was.
Okay.
Three to zero, Deb abstaining. Okay. The second set of minutes was for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Were there any comments, changes?
None, none from me.
Okay. Deb, did you have a chance to look at them?
Yes, I, I, I did. I think they're fine.
Okay. So I would move to approve the Planning Board meeting minutes for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Tim Cronin? Aye.
Anne Bardine, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Great. Well, I see Mr. Garrison has joined us. So what I'd like to do then, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to move to the next agenda item that we have, which is it's an introduction of some folks who are kind enough to apply for the associate member position with the planning board. And the first one up that we have, there are four candidates actually, that we're going to speak with tonight. And the first is Mr. Garrison. How are you, Jeff?
I'm well. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yep.
Can you hear us? Okay?
I can, I hear you very well.
All right. Well, I'm Tim Cronin and I'm joined by Anne Bardine and Deb Rogers-Hamilton and Brian Murphy. And our Chair, Ray Cook, is not at this meeting tonight. But first, I wanted to thank you for your interest in the role of associate member of the board. And that, this is the role that I kind of started with, and I'm sure others here might have as well, with the planning board before being elected members. But if it's okay with you, I'd just like to describe what the associate member position involves. And then welcome any questions that you have for us as well. And that's probably what we have time for this evening. But the associate member position is one where the person would participate in all the discussions before the board. That, you know, we definitely value the feedback of the associate member in all of our discussions and you have the ability to ask questions of applicants and contribute to all the conversations. The only limitation that I'm really aware of is on voting, and that would be only in the case where an elected member isn't at a meeting, that the associate member would have the ability to vote instead of that elected member. Our board meets twice a month on Tuesdays. It's, I think, the first and third Tuesday.
Right.
Generally, we vary that a little bit, but I think that's the general, the general schedule. Our meetings last anywhere from an hour to three hours, maybe, depending upon the agenda items. And those could include special permits, subdivision applications. Like we had this evening also approval not required requests from a property owner in town where they want a, a statement from the planning board that their particular subdivision is not one that requires subdivision approval under the Massachusetts law. So there's a specific parameters for that that have been developed under Massachusetts law over time. So we do get a fair number of those from time to time. And going over, obviously, the zoning bylaws and the, and the regulations, something that we do pretty regularly. The board has been good about updating those as needed particularly to conform to changes in Massachusetts law. The other thing that the, the board, I think, has been particularly active on lately relates to stormwater control, and there's a stormwater bylaw in town, which has become very important to some property owners because we've had some, as you can imagine, flooding incidents and things like that at construction sites. So we have a good program for that now. There's a great interest in developing affordable housing in town as well. And Deb is on the Affordable Housing Trust and can provide more information on that if you'd like. And then there are these local and regional planning initiatives that go on that would include what we call a comprehensive plan. It used to be called a master plan, but that's really for the development of the whole town. It's a very interesting process that happens every few years where there's a lot of feedback that's solicited from the citizens in town about, you know, the, the future of the downtown, for example, and what folks would like to see and preserve within the town as well. And obviously, we hold public hearings and get a lot of feedback as an, as an elected board. We do have a dedicated planner position. Unfortunately, our planner left. She was great. And we are now in the process of hiring a new planner that will hopefully accomplish over the next month, month or so. But we do have an awesome support staff in town as well. So definitely reviewed your resume. You have a very interesting background. It's too bad Ray isn't here this evening because I think you would get along famously with him. He is a professor emeritus of structural engineering at University of New Hampshire. But, you know, you bring, you know, a lot of interesting experience to the, to the role. And I think that I just ask, what piqued your interest, I guess, in applying for the associate member position?
Well, I would say I've had a long experience on the private side of planning and development and project work. This move to the East Coast from the West Coast for me has been a big, sort of a life upheaval, but very interesting. I've been very excited about it. And the, the, the way the eastern states are handled and managed, much different than what, the way we do it out in the West. So there's much more opportunity for, I would say, average citizen involvement, and I find that pretty exciting. We don't do that in the West at all. It's, it's, you know, I, I noticed that the counties out here in Massachusetts, the counties are sort of, yeah, well, they're there, but they don't really count for much. Whereas where I, where I'm from, you know, originally, the counties are very powerful and are almost sort of impenetrable. So I saw this as an opportunity to do things from the, sort of the involvement from the regulatory side, where, you know, getting involved as a, as a concerned citizen, you can really have an impact. I feel like I've had a pretty good experience in, you know, several decades of doing things and seeing how things have done right and done, and done poorly. Love to bring that kind of experience to bear and see, and be part of the experience of the, sort of the involved citizen. I find that really exciting.
Yeah, it is. You're absolutely right. It is so different in the East versus the West, particularly regarding, almost when you get out of the Atlantic seaboard, just about the county system, it's just, it's totally, you know, not, not powerful in Massachusetts for sure. We do, we do have a county system, but they don't have much authority. So, yeah, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to be at any of our town meetings, but, you know, there's a lot of citizen participation, you know.
I, I have been on virtually and, and they're very entertaining and enlightening. I like them a lot.
Yeah.
Which I think is fantastic.
Tim, could you close your window, Tim? We're still looking at the KP law.
What, Brian, why don't you keep going while I attempt to figure that out? All right.
Yeah, I just like to get that out of the screen here.
At the bottom of the screen.
Jeff, where did you live? West Coast?
I've lived in Southern California, Central California, Hawaii, and Seattle.
Okay.
So I've been up and down in my whole life. I, I grew up, I did spend some time in Detroit when I was small, so I am a hockey player. I learned hockey there, carried it with my whole life and looking forward to playing hockey here in Massachusetts this, this fall.
Ray will like.
Stuck with it.
I grew, I grew up north of Detroit, too.
Yeah, let, let me just add, Jeff, and for any of the others who are listening, there are four candidates. We do not make the final decision on this choice. That is up to the select board. We are asked to provide two names to the select board for consideration, and they, they will make the choice. Just, just so you're aware of the, of the process here. Okay?
Sure.
Brian, is it only two names or is it at least two?
Yeah, I think it's a minimum of two, so.
Yeah.
We'll see, see how we do. It's wonderful to have this much interest, I'll just say.
Yeah, it's great. It's great.
I was sorry before.
I'm just excited to be in West Newbury. We, you know, I took a new position in Boston. It's my, my office, my, my job's in Cambridge, but I'm able to work remotely and we, my wife and I looked up and down. My wife's from Katona, New York, and so she's very familiar with New England. And, you know, we looked up and down and all over the place and we sort of just, we fell in love with West Newbury. So being any part of it, it's been exciting.
That's, that's great. Do you have any questions, I guess, for us, you know, about the board?
No, I think the position's pretty clear and I understand, I, I, I don't know, I mean, this isn't really that important a question, but liability on the, on the part of the board for decisions made, is it all, I assume it's all, yeah, I see hands shaking your head.
Yeah, no, I don't have that chapter and verse, but, you know, I think we're very well protected as elected officials, so.
The, the board has been sued and the town covers, you know, the, you know, legal costs and whatnot.
Probably sued as a board. Partial to being, being a board.
Yes. It's only happened a few times, but it has happened.
Right.
Not during my tenure, Brian.
Nope.
Well, I don't know what that says. They know, they know that you're a corporate attorney, so, yes.
Do you have any questions about my experience and background?
Jeff, I wondered, has your work been with residential or what types of projects have you worked on?
Oh, almost exclusively either commercial, industrial, or academic. So I've done a lot of academic research and then worked a lot in industrial space. I've done work in, as an environmental geologist, I've done a lot of work in commercial space and commercial, a lot of worked with redevelopers in doing commercial cleanup and commercial repurpose, you know, brownfield development.
Yeah.
Not so much in residential, but when you grow up in California, you see a lot of residential development going on. So Ben, as in my personal experience, has been a part of watching large developments grow, both good and bad. So been a very active part of many different communities growing through the years of, you know, Southern California, Orange County, watching that develop through the eighties and nineties, being in Central California and the Bay Area, watching that involvement through, you know, the coming and going of different tech entities. So I've been, been a part of that from an arm's length. But I've, I've got a sister who's deeply involved in the development community in, in the Bay Area. So she comes to me with, for questions a lot.
She does residential?
She does residential and commercial, yeah. And sort of the interface, in the Bay Area, there's a lot of interface between, you've got a lot of small communities that are trying to hold on to their small suburban identity. And then you've got the Googles and the Facebooks coming in, trying to build large buildings and try to, trying to shoehorn those together. My sister's right at the apex of that a lot. So dealing with residential communities trying to, you know, hold on to their identity, but at the same time trying to encourage proper growth, you know, intelligent growth. You know, not, not too fast, not too slow. Basically, you end up where no one's happy, but.
Exactly. Nature of compromise, right?
That's how you know you're doing it right. If, if everyone's upset, then you're on the right, you're on the right spot.
Okay.
Great.
Tim, we're at 7:30, so.
Yep, yep. So Jeff, thank you again very much for, for your interest. Yeah, it's a pleasure to meet you and you're welcome to hang on our meeting. And, you know, we do have some other scintillating items later in the agenda that you might be interested in. I think we're gonna have our building inspector come aboard, but that's up to you, whether you wanna, you have time to hang on or not. But thank you. Nice meeting you.
Glad to meet you. I look forward to meeting you, meeting you down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
See you at town meeting.
Mr. Dudley.
Hey, everyone.
Thanks for your patience.
Of course, not a problem at all.
Yeah, and a, and a pleasure to meet you. I don't know if you, if you were listening, I can provide some further information on the, the role of the board, but you probably just heard my song and dance about that, so you may.
I did. No, that was helpful. I made sure to tune in. Definitely to that part, just so you don't have to cover the same, you know, same items again.
Yep. I, maybe what I can tell you also is kind of what I think is, I guess, hot, you know, hot button items in the town. You know, just to give you an example of some of the things that we looked at, one of the big initiatives. You know, just to give you an example of some of the things that we looked at, one of the big initiatives that we have going on now is compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, which is a multifamily housing initiative that the state has. Yeah, so there's there's litigation over it, not involving our town certainly, but other towns and yet there's a lot of interests in developing housing. And I mentioned Deb and her role in affordable housing trust that we have in West Newbury and you know, unfortunately, the MBTA Act is not really focused on affordable, developing affordable housing. It's just housing and so, but, you know, in our town, you know, what we've recognized is that there is an affordability issue in town. And it may not necessarily be, the affordable housing is defined by the statute that we need, but we definitely need the ability to to look at our policies regarding housing and to see how we can encourage, you know, the ability of younger families, older folks who wanna, you know, retire and stay at home to to do that. And that leads to another initiative that the board's been active on over the last couple of years, which has now been codified in Massachusetts law, which is this accessory dwelling unit. So that would be, you know, a dwelling unit, as you probably know, within a within an existing home that's added and you know, it's kind of a separate dwelling unit for, it could be family members or whoever. But it gives people an opportunity. So there's a lot of interest along those lines or very residential town, obviously. So we kind of tend to focus on, you know, the needs from a residential standpoint, but certainly affordability is a is a big thing.
Yeah, we just bought a house, so I I get that. I know it.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, it took took a little while, but we just got lucky and, you know, kind of bided our time a little bit, but yeah, no, that's it. It's definitely a topic that's interesting to me, too. I've been at least kind of keeping up with what I can read about it and, you know, I haven't joined any of the meetings yet before before, but yeah, it's a real, it's a real dilemma. I mean, I'm aware of the state's policy and the mandate there, and then I'm, I know that there are several towns up actively fighting it, where they're closer to the actual MBTA lines that are real commuters in, so like they're having a much earlier fight, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't progress here someday if, you know, under those guidelines, if they don't change or loosen their restrictions. So it's it, something needs to happen, but obviously that has to be the right thing, and I can see that takes a lot of input from everybody, a lot of time to figure out, and it's not a one size fits all.
Exactly. Right, right. In our town, you know, the number of units that we have to develop, you know, we'd started at five hundred under the original guidelines, so we don't we don't face with that anymore, but it's still a significant number and you know, our town treasures open space, farmland, you know, the the hor, you know, the area for equestrian activities, very unique town, you know, and there's a lot of interest in preserving that way of life as well. So it's, you know, there's not not too many towns around like West Newbury, at least in the eastern Massachusetts. So it's a, it's a pretty special place. So thanks for you, thanks for your interest in the position. So we just looking to become more involved in the town? Was that it?
Yeah, I mean.
Your interest?
Yeah, I've wanted to get involved. I kind of was using the not owning a place as like a reason. Yeah, well, I'll wait. I'll kind of not really get involved and not the best reason, but that was sort of what was happening. And so then now we finally bought a place. It was like, I just, I need to start, you know, try and get involved where I can. Because I do want to be a part of the decisions that are made. I want to have, be a part of the voice for our generation that's here, you know, and just help shape this down for the future. That'll work for everybody. And so when I saw this come up, it was right up my alley with my background of, I've been in commercial construction for sixteen years, sixteen plus and and real estate development. And so not not residential, but it's similar and I'm aware of planning departments and permitting and special permits and zoning and entitlements to to some extent. I'm very curious about getting involved here with this, you know, these decisions really affect the local landscape. And so that definitely is exciting to kind of be a part of that.
Yep, and we have a solid board that, you know, Deb and I are like the newest members. But we have three members that are longstanding, bring a huge amount of experience. I've learned a lot, you know, my few years on the
I imagine, yeah, these positions come, become available too often.
You know, folks come, you know, they come and go and, you know, sometimes they take other, you know, volunteer opportunities in town or whatever, you know, or they they move on, but, you know, from time to time. So I've been on the board five years, maybe?
Yeah.
I think, yeah. And Deb, you've been on, what, two, is it?
This is my second, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Nathan, where did, where's your commercial experience? Where have you lived previously?
So that started in Colorado. Well, so I grew up in Vermont, Dorset, Vermont, which is, you know, just north of the border of Massachusetts there. Finished high school in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, you know, I kind of know the area and, but I'll come back to that with Colorado is where I worked and then California, just like kind of similar to Jeff, where I was in San Francisco in the Bay Area for twelve years or so. Yeah. Yeah, doing commercial construction, data centers, and then a lot of renovations of existing buildings and existing mainly office lab space, you know, those types of things. Now, since moving back, which we moved, my family and I moved back here in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, January. And so I started a position with kind of an advisory company for lenders for commercial projects in the Boston area. So monthly, I kind of go down to a handful of job sites and we do reports and kind of pull together some sort of risk assessments for investors and more so to put it, you know, kind of put it in their terms or lingo they understand. So it's not coming directly from the site. We're just another set of eyes and ears to kind of shed light on progress and just keep everybody honest. So that's been a an interesting role of getting involved with or the entitlement process there in Boston and Cambridge, Somerville, all the surrounding areas. So, yeah, but then we, yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you feel any concern about a time commitment, you know, for this twice a month? Couple hours a night, some homework in between, you know, reading notes, et cetera.
Yeah, no, I honestly don't. I think as long as every meeting isn't the three hour meeting, but those are certainly fine when they're when they're needed. Yeah, I I really have no problem with that. My workload is fairly manageable. It's mostly remote. So I only go down to Boston a handful, you know, times a month. And then, yeah, I mean, a couple nights out of the month to spend doing this would be, I think, well worth my time and something that I wanted. So I think it's, you know, we're here for the long term, obviously, just having bought a place too where there's no end in the future for us here at this house.
Thank you.
Too much hands on work to just move out.
Nathan, where did you buy? I'm I'm
On Stewart Street, right? Yeah, the corner of Stewart and Middle. So we're at one thirty four Stewart.
I'm right around the corner.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Adams's house.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people knew them. Obviously, they they were here for quite a time and everyone speaks very highly of them.
Yep.
Even some road cyclists stopped by for water once. They're like, oh, he usually let us fill up our water bottles. Like, by all means, yeah, just help yourself. Keep it going.
Funny.
I do have a question on the, what's the role of the planner versus the planning board?
Oh, good question.
Got a little light on?
Yeah, well, I might let Ann or Brian answer that because you you have the legacy when we didn't have a planner, I think, right? And how that role evolved.
Well, the planner is a staff position. It's typically someone who's educated in city planning or, you know, some related field with a lot of experience in municipal municipal planning. And that person staffs the office and answers questions and, you know, is in charge of making sure that we comply in our deliberations and in our written documents with all the statutory requirements. Whereas the board is elected and we're knowledgeable and we've, you know, we take classes sometimes to learn more about this. And we listen and deliberate and sort of, you know, make sure that the process is carried out fairly, but but ultimately, the staff responsibility resides with the plan.
I would just say that the 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 board doesn't always accede to what the planner wishes. You know, we we're residents. The planner is not typically, has never been a resident. So we we bring a a little bit of a different perspective sometimes. I mean, we rely on, you know, for for the legal expertise and the day to day stuff. Ann and I have been doing this for over twenty years each. And and, you know, mass zoning law is confusing and it changes and and whatnot. So I'm not gonna sit and tell you that I know all the ins and outs because I don't. I still don't. But that's why we we do rely on the planner and and she's the face of the for the town. People come in, talk to her about this or that, and she's a liaison with the building department, often with with health matters that may come up. So there's a, there's a symbiotic relationship, but, you know, ultimately, the decisions are are up to the board.
No, that makes sense. Thanks.
Good question.
Yeah, very good. So we're we're at at the time, Tim.
Yeah, so again, Nate, you're welcome to stay on. We are gonna move on to our next candidate if he's available, but a pleasure talking to you and thank you again.
Appreciate the time, everybody. It's great to meet you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Aiman?
Yeah, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to meet you.
Nice, nice to meet you.
I wasn't sure. I showed up about twenty minutes ago and there was another gentleman on.
That's okay.
Fair enough, but anyways, I figured the second time around, there was another candidate, so I figured I'd stick and see what he had to say.
Sure.
Good.
Well, we we have a wealth of candidates and we're happy about that. So this is, this is great.
We, in the past, we've only sometimes had just one and, you know, it this is a bounty.
How many, out of curiosity?
Four.
Okay. That's a bounty compared to one, right?
Very much, yes. And and everybody looks terrific, so. It's it's, I don't know if you heard, but the the final decision is up to the Board of Selectment and they're gonna want an interview as well.
Okay.
So that's just the way the bylaw works.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no worries, no worries. The woman I spoke with in the in the city office about two weeks ago mentioned that to me, so. So, yeah, that's no problem at all.
I guess our planner, Sue, probably, who has moved on. She is retired. Yeah, we are in the midst of hiring Ted.
Okay.
A new planner.
Nice.
So what I just wanted to do is to maybe give you a little bit of background. I don't know if you, did you hear my description, the background of like the Associate Member Position in the Board and things like that? Okay, well.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, if it's helpful to you, I can give you a little bit of that.
Yeah, the associate, I I did hear at the end of the tail end of that last candidate's time, you were explaining the difference between the planner and the planning board?
Oh, yeah, 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 that was a question. Yeah, but as far as the the role of the associate member, what it is basically is a non-voting, generally a non-voting participant, but other than that, a complete, you know, participant in the planning board's discussions. Participating in all the meetings. We meet twice a month. It's the first and third Tuesday usually of every month. And our meetings last anywhere from, I would say, an hour to maybe three hours. And the three hours is pretty unusual, I think. And, you know, we really value the feedback of the associate member, the same as, you know, an elected member of the board. And the associate member would have the ability to vote when an elected member is absent. That's basically how it works. As far as our meetings go, you know, everything currently is by Zoom, so it's very convenient in the in that respect. We get a lot more, I think, participation actually from residents. Particularly when we have lively items on the agenda. Tonight is pretty quiet, but, you know, usually a few people will show up. Sometimes many people show up, you know, if you're talking about a certain, you know, treasured property in town, you know, that's slated for some action before the board, you know, you'll see a lot of people show up. The agenda that we have, you know, could include a special permit, you know, where the where the authority for special granting special permits in town. Subdivision applications, approval not required requests, which is subdivision approval being not required. There are exceptions in the Massachusetts law and we see a fair number of those. Those generally are properties that meet zoning and but are being subdivided from another parcel, so they have access to a roadway and they otherwise have a conforming lot. So they come before us with a plan and and we review that and if it meets the criteria, we approve that as one not requiring formal approval as a subdivision plan. We have the subdivision in zoning bylaws and regulations, you know, something that we look at. You know, because we're a municipality, just like, you know, Boston and every other, you know, municipality, we have to keep up with the changes in Massachusetts law. So we're, you know, usually updating that. Have a very good staff in town from the, you know, the inspectional services people, you know, and the folks that handle our conservation issues and things like that. So we get a lot of good input, you know, when changes are proposed from those departments and from individuals. We have a lot of individuals in town who are active, particularly on open space, you know, preserving ocean, open space in town and are active you know, in the conservation world too. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of there's a lot of very dedicated citizens in town who take an interest in things that come up, you know, before our boards from time to time. There's a lot of interest in affordable housing in town, just because all the towns around here have become so unaffordable. So, you know, we continue to look at different ways to to assist in the development of that. And Deb is on our Affordable Housing Trust in town, so we have a debt, no, a dedicated trust that's been funded to develop affordable housing. And, you know, the other things that we do, just like every other planning board, we have to address, you know, the the state initiatives and one example, it's kind of lively right now, is something called the MBTA Communities Act that you probably heard about, where there's a multifamily housing initiative requirement for each town to designate a basically a new zone for for development of multifamily housing. So that's obviously a challenge in a very rural community like West Newbury. We do have that dedicated planner position and we hope to, you know, hire someone in the near future for that. We do rely on that expertise and as was mentioned, so do our residents, you know, that's the face of our department in town. So, any questions on any of that?
No, no, very straightforward. Thank you for for walking me through that. I did, I did, Deb would be proud to hear this. I did read the the HPP recently.
Nice.
Oh, great.
So Deb, I imagine, and maybe all of you were involved in in that process. It sounds like maybe every five years. You need to, if if you're not at the ten percent threshold, you need to provide a plan for how you're going there. And, yeah, anyway, so I so I read that. So so that component of many things that you just talked me through is my mind.
Well, if it didn't put you to sleep, you're okay.
Well, it's so so for background on on me, just if you if you don't mind, for thirty thirty seconds and then we Well, it's so so for background on on me, just if you if you don't mind, for thirty thirty seconds and then we can go into more detail. So I I am a multifamily developer, so not only do I live in town, I don't, I haven't actually done a project in town, that's probably why you haven't seen me. Here, but but I do work in Havrell. And I've done two recent projects over the last four years, and I have another one actually underway right now, that's more of an affordable. Affordable focused project, it's it's pretty interesting, I'm sure I can talk your ears off about that. But but anyway, so so very familiar professionally with with how this world works. Still, the MBTA Communities Act. Is still kind of confusing for me, I'm still reading up on it and trying to understand all the nuances to it. But but yeah, and I've actually, I've never gone, candidly, never gone to the planning board before in the city of Havrell. Every project I've done has gone through city council for a special permit. So it sounds like guys do.
We issue special permits, yes.
Yes, yeah. So yeah, a lot of historic redevelopment, it looks like you've been involved, but yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, so my my background actually, so I spent about fifteen years in in basically the technology space. So mostly marketing software technology in in Boston, kind of bouncing around a little bit, the the Boston startup. Technology scene and. Yeah, did that for for about fifteen years in a variety of sales and sales leadership roles. And basically while I was doing that, I was fortunate enough to save up some cash and start buying some properties. And got into the world of rental properties and discovered that it was interesting. And could be a path to future retirement for for myself, candidly. And I just, I've always been very interested in, I I grew up working with my hands. Working with both my father, my stepfather, doing like, you know, work around the house and even while I was in high school, I would install. Like furniture, like desks and chalkboards and things like that, libraries in schools down in Connecticut. So I was always very comfortable around tools, so anyways, long story short, I got into real estate. Started doing some of the work myself, like buying apartments and doing the work and then renting them out. And then that grew to a point where I was burning the candle at both ends, working, you know. I don't want to say nine to five because it was far more than nine to five in the technology world and high growth startups that are like. Ever demanding and it seems to never stop the work. And then meanwhile, this growing kind of rental business that grew into then development on the side. So I pivoted into that full time about two years ago. So most of my development, my development experience is pretty light so far, I've done two projects, I have a third one. That's almost ready to to break around, we're about sixty days out. But my two projects so far are historic redevelopment projects, so right in downtown Havrell. Old mill buildings, basically both of them were change of use projects, so both fully commercial buildings. But in a what's what they call the smart growth downtown overlay district, which allows for. Conversion to mixed use through a special permit. So we, you know, successfully got special permits for both of those, one was an eleven unit project. The the other one that I just completed was eighteen units. So yeah, you could read more, but variety of, you know, both of those were historic tax credit projects, both state and federal. And then there were some grant money from the Home Consortium down in PBD. And HDIP, which is a Gateway City funding program, it's a tax credit program. So, you know, some experience there, working with various organizations, trying to make these projects work.
Great.
Perfect, excellent. That is some great background. Any other questions for us, Ted?
I mean, I think the the gentleman that was before me asked a few of them. I I think, you know, my main question, so in addition to time commitment, in the in between sessions. So how, since this is a public forum, I imagine there are rules around what can and cannot be discussed outside of this meeting. What happens in between sessions?
You mean among the board members, yeah, there are definitely open meeting. Law requirements that do preclude us from, you know, having discussions among board members. That should be, you know, the subject of an open meeting, so you would never see like a majority of, you know, board members. Having a coffee and, you know, talking about things that come before the board. But, you know, what we do is, we do have the planner resource and so, you know, that person is usually the. Point person for board members to, you know, ask questions, get additional information. And, you know, there there's nothing wrong with the one on one conversation with another board member in between meetings, I don't know if that's helpful.
Okay, gotcha, but you're not discussing active topics that are that are on the agenda, you're not supposed. Because you mentioned before homework, I'm assuming it's in preparation.
Yes, exactly, it's the type of homework you've been doing, like the housing production plan.
And it's it's not onerous, I mean, it it just, you know, there's sometimes there's some reading and. When you get one of those documents, it's okay, there's a little bit more time required.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I I'm ashamed to say I don't really have many, many questions.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, I just want to give you a chance.
I'm sure I'd come up if we sat here for a minute, but.
Now, we we have another person waiting, so.
My last question, Ted, how long have you lived in West Newbury and where do you live?
Since twenty fifteen, I live on River Road, I purchased the in twenty fifteen, the. You may remember there was a pink house with a brick facade. One oh one River Road. Conservation, you guys talked about conservation, that's very much, you know.
If you're on River Road, you're well aware of issues.
Yeah, the the flood studies and everything going on, so so anyways, we bought that. Dare I call it ugly pink house about eight years ago, nine years ago and spent three years renovating it and it looks completely. Now, we're very happy here, two kids in the local school system, so going to be here for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, pleasure meeting with you and you're welcome to to stay on, Ted.
I'll jump off, nice to meet you, I think.
Nice to meet you. Is Ms. Knowles, Molly, are you?
She is.
On, I probably could tell by.
Listed there.
Yes, yes.
But she may have stepped away for a minute.
Yeah, I see. Oh, there you are, excellent, welcome.
Oh, you're muted, Molly.
You're muted, yeah. Yeah, we we can't hear you.
She may not hear us either.
Maybe she can't hear us, we can't hear you, that's. I don't, is there a universal unmuting?
There should be.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, excellent.
Of course, my computer doesn't want to work because I was on my phone, so I had to give it permission to use the microphone. Hi.
Hi. Welcome, and I'm Tim Cronin, I'm Vice Chair of the Board, our chair is not here this evening, that would be Ray Cook. But it's it's nice to to speak with you, I'm joined by Brian Murphy and Deb Rogers Hamilton and Ann Vardine. And we definitely appreciate the interest that you've shown in this associate member position. I I know you've been on the line a little bit, I gave a description of the associate member role. Did you, did you hear that or would you want to hear that?
I didn't hear it. Sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine, so the associate member role, it's it's pretty much a. Full participant role with the board, with the exception of voting. And so, you know, the, but just, you know, the the associate member participates in all our meetings. Which are Zoom meetings, by the way, at least currently they are. And they happen every two weeks, it's the first and third Tuesday usually of the month. And the only exception really for participation relates to voting. And the associate member is entitled to vote when an elected member isn't there. So that the associate member votes in the stead of the elected member, that's basically how it works. And as far as how our meetings go, they, as they say, happen every two weeks. They last maybe an hour to three hours, I think is about our max. The, you know, we as elected members of a of a board do attend, you know, obviously town meetings and things like that. So there are some other, you know, there's other time outside of meetings that, you know, the planning board members devote. Not a huge amount, but the what becomes, what comes before that you're the board in. Our regular sort of course of duties is special permits, subdivision applications. We periodically review the zoning bylaws and the zoning regs. We are the authority related to the stormwater bylaw in town. Which if you've been in town a while, you know, there's. There's a lot of interest in managing stormwater in town and trying to control flooding and things like that, so there's been a lot of activity around that. There are local initiatives that the board gets involved with and then there are, you know, state required initiatives. Example of one of the initiatives that's required by the state of all municipalities who are in this MBTA. What is called the MBTA Service District is that we have to have a multifamily district. So for multifamily housing created in town, and so we've spent a lot of time, this board has over the past months. Working on that and as have, you know, other communities that are impacted by this MBTA law. You know, we are a rural town, people really have a great desire to preserve the open space and the character of this town. And so, you know, you can see the kind of challenges that we face when, you know, we're required to develop a multifamily zone. And, you know, because that does impact the immediate residents around that and, you know, it it impacts community. The community itself, schools and, you know, things like that. Our board is fortunate to have a dedicated planning position, which is open right now, we we do have a planner. We had a very good planner who left a short time ago, so we are on the hunt for a replacement. And we're making some progress on that, so hopefully we'll have someone that positioned soon. So that role is is important because that person is the point person for planning in town. So, you know, if residents or developers want to go meet with somebody in a town office, that's where they start, they start with our planner. And the planner obviously is of great assistance to the board and helping us, you know, put together agendas for meetings and materials and things like that, so. We have the benefit of that position and then there's a, there's a awesome support staff in the town. And in the many different departments that we work with all the time, you know, the building inspector will be here this evening talking about. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw and things like that, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of interaction with other town departments. Conservation, you know, for example as well. So that's, that's basically the rundown on the position and the board activity. As I say, it's it's one to three hour commitment every two weeks. Plus, you know, as we talked about with a person who was just preceded you, there is some homework, you know. That's sent out in advance of the meeting, you know, you'll get a copy of all of the meeting materials, the applications that we have and things like that. And you need to get this up to speed, you know, in order to be able to discuss those at a meeting, but that's kind of the fun part. Actually is previewing what we're talking about and then, you know, you have all your questions ready when the meeting actually happens. That, so that's the description of the board's role and the associate member role, any questions, Molly?
Well, I guess I was really interested when I saw the email come through too. Because where it was an associate member, it seemed like a really great learning experience to try and get in and I'm on the. I think when I I went in and chatted with Sue Brown a little bit before I applied, just to learn a little bit. And she had mentioned a few of the other people had a construction background like I did, so I feel like we all probably had the same idea like, oh, come, let's. Go see this, I'm hoping that like what I do on the daily at work, you know, on the general contractor side, that this would almost. I know residential is a little different, but it would just kind of like tie that loop for me and connecting the dots. And, you know, what makes sense, so I found that very interesting. I'm sure as I learn about the bylaws and the state laws and the zoning and everything, I will have questions. But just because, you know, I'm interested in learning about it. But as far as the homework and anything additional, I feel pretty confident in my capacity that that wouldn't. You know, be too difficult for me to commit to.
Yep, and, you know, I see, you know, you are, you have a client. Interaction responsibility at work, you know, so it's really important, you know, because that's, we're kind of, I don't want to call it a service organization. But, you know, we are responsible for getting the input of the, you know, the community, you know, on different things. So it's great to, you know, to have people who have a rapport with dealing with people. And sometimes, you know, it can be a difficult setting, you know, if it's a developer, was it specific mission, you know, for their property. And there can be some back and forth, but a lot of our our role is just soliciting input from the community. Important. Any of the other members want to chime in?
What, Molly, what is it that you do as a general contractor, what types of projects?
So we do retail centers, grocery stores, auto dealerships, restaurants. We've done a couple academic schools and then science and technology, we're kind of, that's our sector right now that we're really growing in. But we have about seven sectors that we focus in, so kind of have a very wide portfolio of of work that we do. The Cool Foods is one of them.
Is any of it local?
Yeah, so I'm based right in Beverly. And where we have an office in Beverly and then in New York, but we pretty much, we build a little bit in New Hampshire, a little in Maine. But our subcontractor base is really North Shore, South Shore, we're in Connecticut a little bit. Little bit in Rhode Island, but we're pretty much very heavily New England based, and then our New York work is kind of around. The boroughs in there, we don't go too far north in New York or anything.
And how long have you been in West Newbury?
I moved up here, my husband in two thousand and sixteen, we live on Albion Lane. He grew up here, we bought his grandparents' house, so. We're here with our two kids.
That's great. Any other questions for Molly?
No, no, I I read her resume and I think, you know, good background and just so you know, I I too had. Commercial construction and business, so yes, it it it's certainly a help. In it, but, you know, we we don't look at things where you're, people are designing, you know, building their their house. But it 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 helps to have that innate understanding when you're looking at a plan. We see plans for a single lot or we see plans for, you know, two or three lots or whatever. So I think that would be a plus, thank you for your interest. And I could say that somebody, did Sue mention to you that, you know. The select board is the the group that actually makes the decision, okay.
Yep, yep, she did, yep, she said you'd meet the planning board, yep, yep, yep.
I don't know, we've always puzzled over that, but that's the way it is.
I think, Brian, it's because the associate member is appointed. And I think.
I know, I know.
All the appointed stuff in town happens.
They should trust us, have we been, you know.
You're going to be a dog.
Well, we have four really, we have some really great interests, very well qualified people, so we're very, very lucky right now.
But, yeah, I'm I'm all set, thank you, yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much, Molly, for the expression of interest and we'll be getting back to you. And as Brian said, our process is to. And uh, uh, as Brian said, our process is to make some recommendations to the uh, select board. And so that's, that's what we'll be doing next.
All right, sounds great.
It's a pleasure to meet you, thank you.
Thank you all as well, thank you, have a good one, bye.
Thank you. Will you chime in and like ask a question?
Yeah, I could have, yeah.
All right.
Well done.
Yeah.
Yeah, some very.
Holy cow, yeah.
Fine candidates, yeah, bless, yeah.
I think the select board will find spots for all of those people.
In one position.
Yes, yeah, I hope they, I hope they do, yeah, you know, it's, it's great to see that level of interest in town.
Yes.
All right, uh, is Sam on?
My name is.
I am.
Very good.
Wait a minute, there's another.
Samuel's iPad, there we go. Good evening. How you doing, Sam?
Excellent, how's things?
Very good.
How are you?
Oh, I, I feel a little inadequate now coming after those folks.
Yeah.
Not, not at all.
Thank goodness, your position's already secured, Sam.
I know, I know.
Yeah, they have high expectations, they give you all kinds of props, I don't know if you heard that, so. I uh, thank you for coming on tonight. Um, I did look at the materials and I don't know if you want to provide just a brief introduction of, of the markup that you gave us. Uh, maybe that's the thing to do.
Sure, so um, I, I'm guessing most of you are aware of the Affordable Homes Act that was signed into law about two weeks ago. Uh, the good news is, is we were pretty much proactive in, for the most part. Allowing what they're already proposing or already put through, with the exception of the owner occupied portion. That was sort of the biggest piece in our bylaw that has changed. We can no longer require uh, owner occupancy.
Oh, did we?
We did, we did have, yeah, we, we had elements of it in, yeah.
So I, I, I'm curious, I don't mean to jump ahead, but why, why can't we require that?
Cause state law uh, um, now says you can't.
In either structure, we didn't require it to be a relative or an owner, it, but in structure?
Either structure, it is.
Strange. So they now can both be rented?
Yes, my, my question, I'm waiting for lawyers to get back, cause I, I had said uh, or my, my question for them was, well. As a developer, I started looking at this thinking, okay, this is a great opportunity if I'm a developer to buy a property. And then the other question I have, can you condo it? Cause now I could potentially have one large house, one small house. Create a, you know, mini condo association and sell them off individually, which really might help with the housing stock. But does not help with the affordable aspect of the housing stock. You know, unless, yeah, it, it will in creating more housing where you might have less. You know, less people bidding on a single house, but it, this seems to be right now, luckily in, in the two towns I'm in, I have different council in both. Plus, I have a lot of other um, inspectors out there where we share information. And so far, the information they've given isn't much more than I could read in the bill itself.
Yeah.
Um, I did spend a good amount of time reading the entire hundred and thirty pages. Most of it, other than the three pages relating to the ADUs is pretty boring. But uh, there is five point two billion in funds um, at, you know, uh, associated with this bill. Most of it is the types of structures or opportunities that we really wouldn't have in West Newbury. It's, it's older building rehab or building multi-family and when I say multi-family, significant multi-family. Uh, the other thing that I did notice in reading each line of where that money is allocated to. Is preferential treatment is going to go to those communities that adopt the specialized energy code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the long and the short of it, I don't think much of that's gonna make a huge difference for us, difference for us either way. This piece, the accessory dwelling unit, does make some difference in that they have. Uh, changed their language or, or requiring us to change our requirements in our zoning. So there's two, two ways and, and why I wanted to meet tonight was this, two ways I, we can approach this. Um, one is to adjust our bylaw for the fall town meeting to be in line with the law. That will go in full effect as of February second, twenty twenty-five. Um, we can also wait. Um, I don't know if there's a benefit of waiting. Uh, cause right now the law allows us to have reasonable restrictions. With no guidance on what a reasonable restriction is, other than height, area and bulk of the structure. So.
Uh, yeah.
It, 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 it's pretty limited and, and most stuff that I reach out, you know, we might be able to, um. You know, stuff like aesthetic design might be something cities and towns would allow. So if it's a New England style home on the lot, to require it to be a New England style home. Um, I don't think that's really problematic, that's what most people in New England like about where we are. And, and tend to build New England style homes. Um, plus I also have that, it's your property, I'm not a big fan of telling people what they can and can't do in that regard. If you like modern style and that's your thing, you know, some people like beef, some like chicken, you know, get what you want. Um, so I, I guess my big question is, my, my feeling is to go forward. For the fall town meeting to adjust and get our bylaw in line with the law that will go into effect. Uh, two, two, twenty-five, the. By the time we get something back from the AG after fall town meeting, it's gonna be pretty close to that timeline anyway. You know, maybe we're a month or two early, I, I don't think it's gonna make a heck of a lot of difference. But I'd rather uh, take the opportunity if we got fall town meeting to make the corrections before it changes in state law. Um, it just makes things a little cleaner on our end, or at least on my end, as far as what I'm enforcing when. Um, but I, I, I'm really here for, you know, it's, it's up to, up to the board and what they would like to uh, you know, proceed with or not.
So the, go ahead, Brian.
No, I, I, I was just gonna say, I, 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 I'm speaking for Ray Cook, who's not here tonight, that I, I. I, I wouldn't want to make any decision tonight on that without hearing Ray's input on this. And he's back on it for our September third meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't need the decision, it's just one of those, I wanted to get it on the radar because. Um, I think the, the. Lower income demographic towns will feel the impact much more than a town like West Newbury. Um, because you're gonna see a lot, it, it's just more cost effective to. Um, buy a single family property in Groveland and put a house in the back. West Newbury, and not that there's not opportunity for it, I think it's gonna be more need driven than a, you know, need being. Family member or something along that, rather than a need to generate additional income. Um, but, you know, could be wrong.
I mean, this, this goes to the heart of, of some of the opposition that we heard with this originally, that, you know. Well, you, you, who, people will buy it up and it could be willy nilly, there'll be extra, you know, houses and, and we. Quote, sold this, it's typically gonna be the, the in-law or uh, you know, the, a divorce uh, and, and a kid or something uh. Type of thing, uh, so, uh, yeah, it's. You know.
I have a couple of comments, um. Yes, Brian, first I'll go in backwards order, I agree, Brian, we didn't sell it that way, but this is, this isn't our. We're not trying to do this ourselves, we're doing this because the state is.
Yeah, it's just my frustration, yeah, I mean, I know.
No, I agree with you, um, Sam, I, I have a, a head scratching question about the owner occupancy thing while you're talking to lawyers. Seems to me, yes, there's that whole danger of the condo thing and, and the fact that this would make the whole process much more likely to be used by developers and by homeowners. And if the idea is that you're trying to generate more housing units. Then I'm not sure that's the best way to do it, but the other problem is, doesn't this, this seems to be in direct opposition to the fact that. The state says unless a town explicitly allows it, you're not allowed to have short-term rentals, right?
So short-term rentals is a whole other section in there?
Oh, yeah, no, I know it is, but it seems like this will be the perfect thing where developers will say, oh, this is great, I'm gonna buy this. And I'm gonna get two Airbnbs out of it, you know, and it just compounds the problem of hu- housing access for real people.
Yes, so I, I'm very glad we essentially deleted our short-term rental uh, bylaw. Um, I think that it was very timely, uh, this was something also when we put our bylaw to the attorney general. He, it was the one warning he came back with was on the owner occupied, saying that that is most likely not going to be around for much longer. So he did um, he did know of the bill that was proposed back in, I think it was last October. Uh, I did, I thought some of these bills have some legs under them. I didn't think it would move this fast, this is uh, such a major change to forty-eight. Um, I haven't seen a change, I've been doing this twenty years and doing construction for, you know, ten to twenty years before that. I've never seen a change this big and with the speed that they did it. Uh, and I think there's a lot of. A good feeling type of um, law writing here that is great without enough. Uh, thoughtful input from folks that it's gonna impact. Um, so it, it, it's kind of unfortunate that it's, it's this way and there's a lot of things that it's silent on. That we have questions on, cause it says any single family lot, doesn't say any conforming single family lot. Just any single, so now can I take a non-conforming lot and have two units on it? And then to what extent, if I have the state minimum of five thousand with fifty feet of frontage? And can I put two houses on that? That would seem ridiculous, but right now that seems to be the direction. Um, and again, I think of being in Newbury, thank God I moved in. I look at all the uh, the houses on Thum Island on forty-nine hundred square foot lot. But granted, most of that'll be, be lot coverage issues that um, they won't be able to exceed the lot coverage with. I, I think would be considered reasonable uh, to have lot coverage minimums or maximums. The um, the problem with, with that type of stuff though, is we don't know what reasonable is yet. Uh, they, they have not defined it, so, and, and the other thing is they allow you nine hundred square feet of gross area. Or half the existing dwelling, whichever is less. And the problem is they did not define gross area in their law. And different cities and towns have a different definition in their zoning. So now we've got this law that's saying you've gotta use nine hundred square feet of gross area. Without a, a state definition of that, so that's, that's the type of stuff we're up against here. Cause I, I just looked at um, Groveland and West Newbury's and we have two distinctly different gross area definitions. Uh, one does not count basements or some other odds and ends. Um, I think the state's intention is to measure the outside walls and you get nine hundred square feet of interior space. But that's not what their law says, so there's a lot of uh, a lot more questions than answers. I have a multi-page questionnaire that uh, we've been collecting through building officials. That through the association I'm president of, I'm one of the four presidents that make up the federation of building officials. That meet with the secretary of state and um, our, our commissioner of office public safety four times a year. And these are some of the questions I'm gonna bring to them, although they're not typically, we deal with building code issues. Uh, some of this does run into building code issues, cause we're already seeing conflicts of towns making requirements of certain codes. Like um, you know, electrical, if I put a, an accessory unit in my garage and I have power from the house. The electric code doesn't allow the dwelling unit to have power run from the primary house, it has to have its own drop from the street. But yet some of the bylaws we're seeing out there are trying to control this by amending the building code through zoning. And that's, that's not allowed, so the, the good thing is, is our bylaw was pretty permissive to begin with. And pretty um, straightforward, uh, like Groveland, we didn't allow detached, we had a lot of conditions on there. We had, you know, uh, it, it, it's taken me days to try to figure out how to rewrite that so that it fits what we need it to. Um, but anyway, this, this one's a little bit easier, so I'm just wanted to get it in front of the board to give you guys some time to digest. Uh, if you look at the Affordable Homes Act, you're looking at probably like pages thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, somewhere in that area. If you want to read the language itself, it's pretty uh, terse and not very descriptive.
So Sam, let me ask you this, uh, it's, it's pretty revealing that this pertinent part is what, three pages of a hundred and, did you say a hundred and eighty or some page document?
One thirty, so yeah.
It's not very well, not very well fleshed out. Um, given all this problematic language that you and others are identifying. Do you think that portions of this bylaw are gonna be challenged and that this may end up changing and not go into effect as it is now? Or is that too political?
I think it will go into effect and the challenges will be in court. So, or through, there, there's a, there's a provision in the law that says that, I forget which department, it's one of the, the state departments of housing. Uh, may give an interpretation, not shall, but may, and they've been asked and as of. Right now, they are choosing not to, so that's extremely helpful, so.
I don't want to admit they might not have gotten it right the first time.
Well, I, I think that's it, is there, there are a little gunshot to come out, especially this is kind of more a Healy's baby that she wanted to get done, she accomplished her goal. And then there's a whole lot of questions, a whole lot of pushback, and they don't want to step on, on the governor's toes. So it's a little, you know, a little bit political unfortunately, which this stuff usually is. Um, I, I don't know, it's kind of why I usually like building code, it's, it's a little less, less political, you know.
But there, there's no way a town can impose stricter regulations than what the state says? I mean, you know, we, sometimes our septic codes are more stringent than the state, that, that, that we can't do that. And require owner occupied in one unit?
So no to the owner occupied, all building codes would still be applicable, conservation, building, border health. Uh, so if you have a septic system that would not support the additional unit or additional rooms. Um, you, you wouldn't be able to, to build that, or you'd have to come up with a septic system that could support it. Uh, but yes, again, the, the restrictions they allow us are reasonable restrictions. And they don't consider owner occupancy to be reasonable, nor uh, restricting the size, nor restricting attached or detached. And also we can't even impose more than asking for one parking space. And if you're within a half mile of a train station, bus station, ferry, et cetera, uh, you can require no spaces. Yeah, that is, that, that sums it up right there, Deb, huh? I think you said it.
To make the crowded neighborhoods that much worse.
Yeah, uh, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm curious to see what the impact is. I, I hate to be, you know, Chicken Little and say the sky's fallen, but this is, this is pretty, a, a, a pretty big. I mean, I think this has potential to have more impact in a lot of the smaller communities than the MBTA zoning. Um, the MBTA zoning in some communities, just it's not gonna get built out, there's no requirement to build it out. And it's expensive to do those types of developments where, you know, and especially in a town that doesn't have sewer. Um, it's not all that expensive for developers to buy a single family house. And have a nine hundred square foot house stuck in the back.
Right.
Oh, but we'll see, maybe I'm wrong, uh, hopefully all is good. But yeah, I just, I, again, just want it on the radar, you can see the red line, it just reflects almost directly the language right out of the law. Um, and they're pretty, overall, pretty minimal changes. But they're minimal, when I say minimal, minimal in words, but uh pretty impactful for what what it is.
So if we could, maybe Sam, while we got them, I don't know if you have them on the screen here. Are you are you seeing my screen yet? So the first one was the definition of accessory dwelling unit. So it's, let's see, how did this change substantively? Self-contained housing and inclusive sleeping, cooking, sanitation.
The the definition pretty much um reflects the state's definition of a dwelling unit. So other than the um, you know, the language about the principal dwelling, uh, it's it's pretty much how we, you know, a dwelling unit's defined in the building code and other codes.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge change.
No, no, that one doesn't bug me so much.
Good, okay. And then um flip into the next page. Um. So the changes there are the ones that re- relate. This is in a couple of places about owner occupation.
Can you scroll up to him for me?
Sorry. There I am, I'm looking at the paper version, yeah.
I remember it, just not that well.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so, um, yeah, they, of course, owner occupied gets crossed out, which that's really the big change in our bylaw. And then, you know, the the number one there is um really just mirroring the the definition. Uh, and then it's, yeah, and it's, it is a um, the wisdom language about maintaining a separate entrance. That's about it, but yeah, really those big changes of those two strike throughs in the that, you know, section above.
Yep, but there's nothing we can do about it. Stuff wait for the challenge.
You know, e- either either go with the flow or break the law and wait till we're sued, I guess is the uh the two options, or wait and see if we get any feedback from the state in any way. I don't think, I know the owner occupied thing has been a push for quite a while. I don't know why. It seems like, I don't know, that's what always made me comfortable with these accessory units is you have a caretaker on site that has a vested interest in the property that would take care of it. Where if I'm just a developer that can get rent out of it, or like I said, if if it turns out these are something that can be turned into condos, I can flip them and sell them. I mean, on that end, I almost have the, is that even, is that okay from a maintenance standpoint? Cause now you got two owners staying there. But then we get back to the affordable aspect. And yes, the smaller house will be affordable than a big house, but I don't think you know, that's truly the affordable we're looking for.
Affordable just because it's smaller, I guess, isn't.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, if I if I buy a a smaller car, it's cheaper than the big car. Might not suit my needs, but it it's cheaper. That doesn't mean it's affordable, but, you know.
So then just moving on to the next page, it's the same um owner occupancy language that's being deleted.
Yeah, so four, you delete that owner occupancy and then seven just mirrors the language on the parking. Where ours, you know, we've talked about the parking table saying adequate, which um you know, and we may even strike that first, you know, adequate off-street parking, cause it's just we, the way the law reads is just not more than one additional parking space shall be required. Uh, we may be able to keep the language of off-street uh to ensure that it's not you know, someone thinking they can create a parking spot on the street. Um.
Yeah, you never know.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't hurt. I think that would be reasonable to keep parking off the street, especially in you know, this type of town, you know, would it be the same in a Lawrence or a Haverhill? Maybe not, but I think here it's certainly reasonable. Um, and then all the, you know, owner occupying uh registration absence just ends up going out the window. Uh, the only thing that um they do define in there and there is specific language towards short-term rentals and what a short-term rental is versus a, you know, a a long-term rental. Uh, most of that is geared towards the Cape and the Islands to help them with some of the issues down there of um year-round residents. Uh, and defining, you know, how short is short. Um, so if they rent them for a couple of months in the summer, they can still be considered a, you know, a a non-short-term rental for certain purposes. Uh, doesn't really affect us here where we, you know, nix that for now. Um, so not, not so much of a worry, at least on that part.
Okay. And as far as the issues that are being reviewed by council, is that KP law for West Newbury? Or is this more the general the effort that you're involved in?
Um, all of the above. Uh, KP law here, meet in Talam and and Groveland. And then uh we do have some uh legal experts at the state level as well as other cities and towns who use different counsel like Bobowski and and those folks, uh, just anyone and everyone. We, I got, we have a group email out with all the state inspectors just trying to come up, one with a laundry list of questions that we have and how it impacts us both in zoning and in the building code. Uh, but also what, you know, what can we do legally? Uh, we 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 don't know what reasonable is. We don't have a definition of um gross floor area. We, we don't have to worry about the short-term portions. Um, but yeah, there's, there's, there's a ton of questions and and a lot of them relate back to the building code and how these were viewed before. And how they have to be viewed now, and they are truly separate dwelling units now by the state definition. So it's not a single family with something attached unless you share common egresses. So, you know, you can still have a guest suite in your house, those types of things, but um yeah, if it's, if it's under this bylaw, it is a true separate. So your single family within attached unit. We may call it a an accessory unit, but it's a two-family under the building code. It needs to be separated as such. The separate dwelling on the lot, we have to treat it as a separate dwelling on the lot. There's no such thing as an accessory dwelling unit in the building code. So it either is a dwelling or it is not a dwelling. So we're, we're struggling with it.
So, um, I guess between now, like Brian mentioned, you know, like to revisit this at the next meeting that we have. Uh, do you think we'll have some more input from council at that point?
I hope so. Um, cause yeah, we're we're sweating it, uh, not knowing what to do. Um, I'm seeing more of a push in Groveland right now. I've got three people that have already come in aware of this. You know, ready to go, mostly with detached structures where we didn't allow them before.
Alright.
And their lots really, you know, you could do an attached, but really didn't lend themselves to that. So I think that's more we were gonna go to detached anyway at some point uh in the near future. So I think that would have come up either way. But um, there is definitely an awareness out there of this and we, we don't have the answers in a lot of the the questions we have. Um. So yeah, I mean, we can come back in two weeks and I can hopefully give you a little bit more, get raised input, give you guys some time to digest and read through this. But um, yeah, it's pretty scary stuff.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just frustr- it's frustrating and I I get the big picture that what they wanna do, but um, yeah, the, it's, it it may, it's the unintended impact, especially in a little town like ours. Yeah.
And I think that's it. They, they did a very um you know, bird's eye view of what they were trying to do, put together a very nice bylaw that creates more housing, hopefully creates more affordable units, allows for as-of-rights and extra units for disabled and elderly. Um, so it sounds great. Why wouldn't you support it? Um, but it has, has further impacts that I don't think were really uh looked at. At least not looked at by the right people or the right type of uh eyes, you know, architects, engineers, uh planners. Building, yeah, yeah, the zone, who would, who would think the, they'd get a zoning official in there? Um, the other portion that I don't understand quite yet, there is um, further questions on, I think it's section ten, which relates to non-conforming lots that would have merged under the past um section three A, uh, or or section six, your non-conforming lots. Uh, that now that looks like they're giving an exception for lots of ten thousand square feet with seventy feet of frontage that and and I don't know for sure, but it sounds like the potential to unmerge them. Um, and create a buildable lot for a smaller home and the size and bedroom count is outlined in that section. But that's one of the ones a lot of us really are having trouble figuring out how that works and and how we handle it. So that's a, that's a whole other thing. But yeah, looking for answers on that from council as well.
Yeah, it's a little primitive of MBTA where, you know, yeah, you read this brief little bylaw, all the optics are good. Now you, you're a hero. You've created housing, you know, but none of the details were really thought through.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of the questions we've asked council, uh, many of them have just come back with the answer of, I don't know. Um, which certainly isn't helpful, but uh, you know, I know they need time to dig into it too, but uh, as soon as we get answers, I'll uh, I'll try and get them to you.
Thank you.
So, so our our options, when we discussed with Ray, will be uh you know, to to proceed and and put a placeholder in for for the fall town meeting for this. Um, certainly with an option of of moving no action if if there is more information by the time by late October on on clarifications to this. Or maybe the board decides we wait and do it in the spring with uh, do a double header, you know?
I don't know. Get it out a little bit, Brian, a little bit now, a little bit later.
Well, it is, yeah, there's, you can, I I've thought of that, but it's, it's just up for the board members to think about as for when we regroup on the third.
Right, right. By then we may know more. There may have been various challenges.
Yeah, I I I look at, between now and then, it's, you're in the Labor Day slide here, not, maybe not like it's done anyway.
Oh, no, 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 I meant between fall and spring town meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Um, the other thing is, I think, when's the warrant closing? Something like the twelfth or something? There was an email. We are gonna need to to act on this at our next meeting, even if it is with something that we then, as you say, withdraw or move no actions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and 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 the the worst case, if if we wait till spring is we wait till spring. We'll have a few months of of an outdated bylaw that I'll have to enforce by the law anyway. Uh, I just figured it was an opportunity to to get ahead of at least the language that is clear. Um, so, and and essentially my red line reflects what I'd have to enforce come February second anyway, so. Uh, it doesn't hurt if we don't get it there. Um. It just makes, makes us in line right up front and is a little clearer for people that are looking at bylaws and um, unfortunately, we have, would be, you know, briefly conflicting with mass general law, so.
Okay.
That's good.
Well, thanks again, Sam. Um, so, yeah, I mean, if there is some development, you know, with council, they, you know, you get some opinion on some of these things that are open between now and the sixth, that'd be great if you, you know, just pass those along, I guess, to to Ray, uh, technically at this point. And then um, you know, we can talk about it at the next meeting on the sixth.
No, I don't know. Go ahead.
Third, third?
Third, yeah. Um, one of the bylaw that I had brought up prior was the large battery storage systems.
Oh.
So I will be shooting off to you soon, the revised one to uh for West Newbury. It is a bylaw that was written by, uh, it's based on the state's sample bylaw with a number of towns that have already implemented. Um, we took the best of most bylaws and the we is myself, our planner, our uh deputy fire chief, who's a fire engineer, and also on the board of directors for NFPA eight fifty-five, which is the board that regulates large battery systems. Uh, so that was really handy. A battery installer as well as having our own uh electric light department. We were able to have them on board. Uh, so we ended up with what I think is a a really good, comprehensive bylaw that um, cause we can't prohibit them. And right now, the problem in town is if someone comes in, wants to put it in and they're hooking into the grid, we've gotta allow it.
Right.
Uh, this would essentially, uh, anything that would be illegal, we kinda threw the whole we threw everything at the wall to see what what we could have stick so that we have the options of asking for pretty much everything and anything. Um, so I will, we'll send that along. It's a lot of very technical, very boring. Um, it's, 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 it's horrible to read, but um you know, and most of the people uh look at it and go, I don't even know what I'm, I'm half of this says. Um, but we do have it in front of the AG in Groveland. Uh, cause we did adopt it at our spring town meeting. They, I was hoping to have it back by now so we could potentially, you know,
Right.
be moving forward with it, but they asked for an extension. So, we're just wait, you know, sitting on our hands waiting. So I figure assuming they approve it and have no comments, that's ways pretty good for us, considering it'd be the same or very similar bylaw, but just uh, just firing the one in shot.
How how long i- an extension, when do you expect to hear back from the AG approximately?
They asked for another few weeks, uh, so I'm hoping mid-September. Um, probably, it was something I brought up to Angus, that he has a placeholder for a fall town meeting and we just have no I don't think that's realistic at this point. Um, and even this, the ADU, uh, had him put it on as a placeholder. And again, if that's not realistic, then it's not realistic, but at least he had a a rough idea as to what might be coming uh either to this town meeting or or spring.
Okay.
So, and then, other than that, just to add more stuff, is I do have uh Jen starting to do a red line on the table of uses that me and um, uh Leah were working on.
Yes.
So, it's, it's something I've had half, half done. Uh, more so, I've had the the table done for my benefit, so it's easier for me. Um, Leah did the same thing for her. And we compared tables. We came up with the same results luckily, so that's, that's at least good. Uh, but to try and do a red line version, cause our uses are, it it, you know, it's like shotgun approach in the bylaw. They are just splattered everywhere. So we're trying to figure out the best way to do a red line so that it's understandable without any substantive changes, just tablizing it. So then we can actually look at it and go, okay, do we wanna make those changes? But um, in the works, so.
Hey, but it would be great to have.
Yes, it is very helpful. I look at it, it, you know, multiple times a week when people call and go, can I do this? Can I do that? Um, it is really helpful. The realtors are constantly looking for a table calling, asking where it is. Um, and it just isn't right now, so. But that's all I got.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate it, Sam.
So that, as far as the next meeting though, on the third, Sam, is it just the ADA bylaw you wanna revisit? Or do you, do, were you planning on presenting battery?
Um, I'd probably discuss the batteries, um, just to ha- see if there's you know, any comments or or concerns or anything, just just to have, I guess, there's a placeholder on there just for discussion. Um, again, I don't know how far we're gonna get on that in time for a fall town meeting. Uh. Probably not far enough, cause it is pretty, it's lengthy. And again, a good amount of it is kinda technical and it's the only pushback I got at uh town meeting in Groveland is people didn't understand that this wasn't to regulate battery packs in their house. Uh, those battery packs are allowed under NFPA up to seventy uh kilowatts. And the batteries we're talking about start at one megawatt and larger. Uh, so you, it's, you would never have that in your house. Uh, you're just not no, just wouldn't get there. Yeah, just wouldn't get there. If you do, I want to know what you're doing in your house. Something's going on there that shouldn't.
No, Ray might. We'll have to let that ask Ray when he gets back.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Cool.
Good.
See you guys in two weeks.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Anytime. Have a good night.
You too. Well, that is a distressing about the bylaw. Yeah. Okay, uh let's see. Next item, we already talked about with the minutes, I'll set there, the correspondence, there was one item, no, two items. In the packet, which I will stop looking at the paper version that I have. So first was a legal notice.
Yeah, same series. Their MBTA overlay district, so. Yeah, that does. A little different ballgame with the city council.
And limiting the number of cannabis retail licenses, okay.
Well, there's another whole topic for unintended.
For another night, okay. So do amend it as a. So the, and how do you read this? The the, so they actually created a overlay district?
Yeah, they did.
I'll have to look at that.
I think it's that same easterly part of town where they've been trying to do something for years and years and years and years and years.
Oh, okay.
It grabs the highway, you know, exits.
Yes, yeah. Uh and the next correspondence we had is from Hubble um.
Another.
A storage container. Okay, special. Not much going on there, okay. Very good. I think that's it for uh correspondence.
Yes, that's all I saw.
Administrative details, um as far as the um. Hiring process for the planner goes, um we have a couple of interviews um. That are towards the end of next week. Um so two candidates we've set up for uh interviews. And they are, they both look very good, um and I appreciate all of the um the input. So um. Cautiously optimistic that we're uh on the glide path to hiring somebody uh pretty soon. You know, I think tonight, you know, is evidence that there's a lot going on and um, you know. Do we have a bit of a void here um in the planner position? We don't want that to last too long. So. I think that um hopefully, fingers crossed that, you know, our. Couple of candidates that we have will not be hired by somebody else in the meantime, um but. Uh that's the soonest that we could put uh interviews together for them. So that's where things stand there. Any any questions?
No, no.
Uh no, sounds good.
Let's see, placement of items on future agendas, so.
May I add, ask about another administrative?
Oh, please, yes.
To do with the staffing um situation. So we've told people tonight that if they get us a Mylar and some. Drawings, we will sign those. Um so I guess one question is who's going to manage that process? And then my other question is who's gonna, are are we going to? Uh send names of potential associates on, or do we want? They have, how will we, will we have Ray watch?
Yeah, I was just, should we give Ray an opportunity or what do you, what do you think?
I I think we should just send the names on.
Okay.
I I I I think I heard him say he'd be fine with that, but I I don't want to.
Okay, yeah. Deb, are you good with that?
Names for the associate or the plan, the planner?
The associate.
Uh I I was delighted with all four of them. I don't know how we would narrow it down to. Make a recommendation, but are you looking for feedback from this, Tim?
No, just um whether to wait for Ray or not, but I I think I agree with Brian. I think Ray was. Was good with that plan, you know, um for us to go ahead in his absence and send the names along.
Well, they're they're not gonna interview these people till after Labor Day anyway, I'm sure. You know, the select board.
Yeah, they've got pretty full agendas.
It's not not gonna happen anyway, so he'll, he could always weigh in with his. Thoughts. I think the question is, do we pick two? Or do we say, hey, here's here's the four, we listen to them and. Take take who you want. You know.
Well, I would say. I would say yes to both in a way. I mean, I think they were all qualified. I think they all having evinced interest. That a spot should be found for everybody to do something. Uh whether it's this associate member position or not, and we probably each have thoughts about. One or two that we would prefer, but. I don't know that we want to have that discussion right now.
Right. I was thinking we wouldn't, but um.
No, I I I'm fine. I I I I don't know. I mean, we we've never had. More than two.
And this, yes.
I can recall.
Yeah.
It's true.
Um and so we just, you know, if forward uh. You know. Um there's a, there's, you know, one or two that probably would. Garner more interest just because they they have some exposure, but that doesn't mean that somebody who's new to the game. Can't come up to speed.
Right, I think that was true for all of us when we started.
Yeah, I I didn't know anything about zoning.
Needed to go to CPTC classes and all the rest of it.
Right, right, yeah. Um maybe we just send it, send the names on and and say, uh see if they want. Our input. That way we defer it to for the till the third. How's that for a non-decision?
That's not right. Uh I I mean, we're supposed to winnow through and I would think our own recommendations.
No, we're supposed to send at least two names.
Okay.
So. But we'll see what they say. I'm sure they'll say, yes, we want your recommendation.
Yeah.
Ryan's kicking the can.
I I am. I I'm I'm, you know.
I'm still thinking. I mean, I need to go back and look at their. Their written stuff, you know, now that I've seen them in person, that casts it a little bit deeper light.
I, yeah, so I uh Tim, I I think I I would suggest that you just write a note to uh. You know, Angus and uh, who's the chair? Wendy? Is she still the chair?
Yeah.
And and uh. Just say, we we interviewed all four and uh. They they uh they're they're good candidates and uh. You should bring them all in and talk to them. And if she asks, let them ask for our recommendation. That that that's what I would do. But.
Okay. I mean, that that does make uh a lot of sense to me and. You know, doesn't winnow anybody out because, you know, if we're gonna start. Just winnowing it down to two people, then I think I would want race input, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Think in the meantime, I think that uh that's the right thing to do and it keeps the process going.
Yeah, I I I didn't see any, if I, if there was somebody there who was clearly. You know, off the rails or something.
We didn't see that. No, we didn't.
We didn't see that. No, I I I think that they, any one of them could could do just fine.
I agree.
Okay.
So what do we decide about the A and R? Is that gonna be a Jen project to?
Yeah, I was just gonna get back to that Jen, I think. Yeah, she's. Her own person standing, so it would be something I get back to Jen on.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm I'm sure she's seen that or handled that before.
I think she had to be extremely capable in all these arenas.
Definitely, yes. She's been really helpful.
Yeah, very good, good hire, yeah. Um I have one item to mention, if if it's okay.
Sure.
Um just to bring you up to date, um you might recall at the last meeting. I volunteered to speak with Gerard Witten at the MBPC about a traffic study. In MBPC's. Interest in completing a traffic study for the MBTA communities site. Um and and, you know, Angus had. Had said that that'd be fine before they went and looked for some private en- entity. Anyway, it it took two weeks for Gerard to get back. I think he's on vacation. They don't really do. Movement. Traffic studies, they that type of thing that uh it's just, you know, it's a specialized.
Yeah.
Uh computer programs. They they can do traffic counts and provide, you know, other. Elements, but they they don't do that detailed analysis work. So I sent that back to Angus. That copied away. I probably should have copied you, Tim. I'm sorry, I didn't think of that. Um and I haven't heard anything back from Angus. Uh I said, you know, I think the board would be willing to see what Dodson and Flinker. If they might suggest a traffic consultant. Or you can uh pursue it. You know, in in the manner you see fit. So that's kind of where the traffic study thing. Plays at the moment.
What was the timing on that, Brian?
It it was pretty vague. It it was, you know, to be completed. You know. Sometime early January or, you know, sometime between. September and January, so there'd be time to promulgate those results. Uh along with the results of the the financial impact study. Um out to the 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 general public here, well, as a part of our outreach package. Which which, you know, hasn't really taken shape or anything.
Well, they're still trying to, have they hired a consultant for the other?
I don't, I I doubt it. I I think uh. I heard Angus and Wendy say they were gonna go out to bid. Rather than, you know, they had that one, one quote.
Right, but they were skittish about just going with one.
Yeah, so they were gonna go and put it back out for to get others, and I think there's plenty, there's enough time for that. Um but uh so anyway, I. I I'm sure it's being handled, or it's on Angus's uh multi-page to-do list.
Yes.
Hmm, all right, thank you. I think that's it. Any anybody have anything else?
Uh just placing stuff on the agenda, so.
Sure.
So we'll have Sam back to talk about. ADU and uh large battery storage, right?
Yep.
And then, according to my notes from the last meeting. We were gonna go through the housing production plan document and do a line-by-line review in that meeting. If that doesn't get your creative juices flowing, I don't know what will.
I I don't know how I forgot that, Anne.
That's why I take notes, because there's no way I would have committed that to memory, unfortunately. I think we said we were gonna do that.
Wow, okay.
They want our comments on the draft, so.
Yes, okay, no, that makes sense, though.
Again, because of my exquisitely imperfect. System of keeping track of planning board documents. Would you please ask Jen to resend the housing production?
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Will do. Okay.
And then I guess we may have some feedback from the select board on this, on this four associates names.
Yep.
Do anything, I don't know.
Who knows, we may have some.
Yeah, that may have already been.
Feedback on the interviews too.
Oh, and the interviews, yes. Have any more uh resumes come in?
No, you know, I haven't heard, so I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think it's the four.
There were a couple of interesting candidates uh there.
Not local people, it looked like, which is interesting.
Well, there were some unlocal ones too, yeah.
Right, right. I didn't know we were such a draw.
Well, it's very interesting. I feel like it's the same thing with these associates now. That one chap said he'd been here for nine years, but otherwise it's. Relative relatively new to town people, and I feel like the same thing with job changing that. Somehow we're still, we're at a new level of emerging from the pandemic. There's like move, various movement happening here and there that wasn't happening. Just feel like there's a lot of change the last. Little while, maybe it's just me.
Yeah, well, the ability to work from home, right, is bringing a lot of interesting people to town, you know.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Okay. Anything else? Good, okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Hi, hi. Well done. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Thanks for your help. Appreciate it.
All good.
Thank you, Tim. Good night, everybody.
All right, take care, everyone.
Enjoy the rest of the week. Bye-bye.